This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, in the last session we talked about baseline configuration and certain points to be remembered before we start doing the configuration on the system. Now let's try to understand this configuration levels in the SAP system. Let me again put baseline configuration. And here I'll put config levels. When I say configuration level, we do have three levels of configuration in general for most of the settings. First one is your client level config. Second one. Company code level configuration. Third one. Country level configuration. Okay, we will be doing the configuration at three stages. Option number one, we may do the configuration at client level. Option number two, we may do the configuration at company code level. Option number three, we may do configuration at country level. Now here we have to understand based on the different different configuration settings. At which, at what stage we are going to do it and how this is going to affect your other company codes or your other business processes. Let's say the first one as part of baseline configuration, we have written something called company. After that, we have written something called company code. And later on, we have written chart of accounts. These are the first three points from our config list yesterday.
Yes.
Now, let me log into SAP. First one is company. In which screen are we going to create company? What is the transaction code?
O X one five.
O X one five. Let me open this O X one five. In this O X one five, let me click on new entries. Now, we have written three level of config. One is client, the other one is company code, last one is country level. Okay, you have to go in the same sequence. Okay, check while creating the company, do you find a field called company code?
No.
There is no field called company code. Here we have to look at this field labels. You have company, company name, company name two, street, P O box, postal box, city, country. But in this, there is no option for us to input company code. Now, whenever you are creating a new setting, if you do not find company code field or company code option, this is not created at company code level. Clearer?
Yes.
This is not created at company code level. Now, this country level is only two things. Majorly only two things. One is your taxation. Other one is chart of depreciation. Only these two we will be doing it. Country level configuration, otherwise the remaining two things will be into the picture either client level or company code level. So, country level is strictly restricted or limited to taxation and chart of depreciation. Clearer? Now, if you find company code option while doing the configuration, it's company code level setting. If there is no company code option, this is client level setting. Now, while defining a company, are we defining a company at client level or at company code level?
Client level.
This is at client level because we do not find an option to restrict to which company code this company belongs to. Now, your company I'll say. I'll say this is client level config. Next one, if you want to create chart of account, sorry, company code. Where do we create company code?
O X zero two.
O X zero two. Tank server is slow. This is the company code setup screen. If I go to new entries. Now, while creating a company code, do you find a field or an option called company code?
Yes.
But we have an option called company code here. On any configuration screen, if you find company code option, we straight away call it as company code level configuration. So, what I will do? Company code, I'll mention. Company code level configuration. Next one, chart of account. Where do we create chart of account? T code?
O B thirteen.
O B thirteen, the chart of account creation screen. Let me click on new entries on this. While creating a chart of account, do you find company code option?
No.
There is no company code option here. On any configuration screen, if you do not find company code option, we call it as what level setting?
Client level.
This is client level setting. Okay, similarly, if I go to fiscal year variant. Where do we create fiscal year variant?
O B twenty nine. O B twenty nine.
O B twenty nine, okay. If I go to fiscal year variant screen, if I try to add a new entry. Do I find company code option?
No.
There is no company code option. Now, this fiscal year is created at what level?
Client level.
Client level. Similarly, if you take posting period variant. Where do we create posting period variants?
O B B B.
O B B O. Okay. Now, on the posting period variant screen, if I go to new entry, do I have company code option?
No.
No, if there is no company code option while creating posting period variant, this is also again at client level setting?
Yes.
So, this is again a client level config. If you do field status variant. Field status variant, we will be creating in O B C four. On the field status variant, if I try to copy any existing one. Is there any option to input company code?
No.
No, right? Your field status variant is again client level setting? Now, after field status variant, what we have done?
Tolerance group.
Let's say tolerance groups. If you go to tolerance groups, let's say I'll go to O B A zero, one of the tolerance groups. If I click on new entry, do you find company code option?
Yes.
Now, tolerance is at what level? Client or company code? Tolerance groups is at company code level setting. After that, we had document. Splitting. Save this and let's go to document splitting path. S P R O. Financial accounting. General ledger accounting, business transaction, document splitting. Classify G L accounts for document splitting. This is your first setting. While doing so, is it asking for company code?
No.
What it is asking? It is asking for chart of account. Chart of account is at what level setting?
Client level.
Client level setting. If your chart of account is at client level, document splitting which is asking for chart of account, this also becomes client level setting?
Yes.
Right, this is also client level setting. Now, we will be having different other settings within document splitting. The first setting to classify G L accounts, it is asking to input chart of account. But if you go to the other setting, define document splitting characteristics. Let's open this. Here, is it asking any chart of account, any company code?
No.
Here, there is nothing. Now, in short, any configuration that you are going to do at document splitting level, it's a client level configuration. After document splitting, what we did, what we discussed?
Tax procedure.
Tax procedure. If I go to tax procedure, let's say O B Y Z. O B Y Z is where we create a tax procedure. Let's open this. And I'll go to procedures. I go to procedures. Let me try to add a new entry. Now, while creating a tax procedure, do you get any option like client, company code, country?
No. Should countries.
It's not directly asking anything, but at what level we are going to configure taxation? At company code level? At country level, right? So, even though you do not find a country option here, but this tax procedure will be assigned to our country. So, if you go to O B B G. Now, if you select any country of yours and in for this country level, the tax procedure whatever we define must be assigned. If I open the dropdown list here. This is your procedure. Okay, this is the procedure that we have defined or that we will define in O B Y Z. Now, here we are going to assign tax procedure to the country. Based on that, we are going to mention that tax procedure is at what level? Country level?
Yes.
After tax procedure, what we did? Controlling area?
Controlling area.
Now. If I go to controlling area screen, O K K P. If I try to put a new entry here. Do you find company code option here?
Yes, sir. No.
This is not company code. If we select this, it will read the data from company code. It will copy your chart of account, fiscal year, currency and then company name from your company code. But we have to look at these field selections. While creating this, anywhere are we mentioning the company code?
No.
No, right? So, controlling area is at what level?
Client level.
Controlling area is also at client level. So, let's put this also client level. What are the other settings we discussed?
Leading and non-leading ledger.
Let's say ledgers. When we talk about ledgers, we mean both leading and non-leading. Wherever we talk about lecture, immediately you have to think about leading and non-leading both together. Do not see, do not think separately from leading ledger point of view, separately for, sorry. Non-leading ledger point of view, all right? So, the moment you hear the term called ledger, you have to think about leading, non-leading both together. Any ledger that you create, you are going to create at client level, not at company code level. Correct? If you go to this screen of ledgers. Ledger, ledger. If I try to add a new ledger, do we get company code option here?
No.
No, right? So, creation of ledger is also at client level. Next one, within this screen, you are also going to create currency conversion settings. Or currency types that is currently not needed. Let's say we'll put accounting principles. When we define accounting principles, at what level are we going to define this accounting principle? If I minimize ledger. If I go to parallel accounting, let me go to define accounting principles. If I go to accounting principle, if I put a new entry, do we find anything called company code?
No.
No, right? So, accounting principles are created at what level?
Client level.
These are again created at client level. What are the other settings we discussed?
Document type.
Document.
And this pilot currency is also be at the client level, right?
Correct. Where do we define document types? O B?
Yes, seven.
O B A seven. If I try to add a new entry, while creating any new document type, do we have any company code option?
No.
No, right?
No, sir.
Now, creation of your document types is again at client level setting. What other settings we discussed? We also talked about. Currencies. When we are talking about currencies, always talk about parallel currencies. Okay? Now, when you are defining this currencies, at what level are you going to define the currency? We have different type of currencies. If you are talking about company code currency, this is defined at what level?
It is group currency.
Company code currency.
I have I C A, Indian company, sir.
No, we have only three levels. If you want to define or if you want to maintain a particular currency for your company code, you have to maintain, right? If you are talking about local currency, this is at company code level. If you are talking about group currency, this is at what level?
Uh, that's group, country level. Client level.
Group currency.
Client level.
Group currency is at client level. You have another currency called hard currency or index based currency. This one.
Country level.
This is at country level, right? When you are talking about currency, we have three currencies. Local currency is defined at company code level. Group currency is defined at client level. Hard currency or index based currency is defined at country level. What are the other settings that we had?
Profit center activation. Profit center activation.
Okay, in short, let's put profit center. Now, all these profit center settings are defined at client level or at company code level.
Client level.
These are defined at client level. Now, we have to understand why we are telling this is at client level. Yesterday, we discussed that profit center is part of accounting, right? Not part of controlling. But profit center, we are telling this is defined at client level. Now, what is the transaction to maintain default settings or activation of profit center? In which T code do we maintain that? To use profit center accounting, you have to activate profit center accounting. Where do you activate? Start from zero. Zero K. Zero K E five. Okay, that's not O, it's zero.
Okay, okay.
Let's go to zero K E five. When I go to zero K E five, what it is asking for?
Controlling area.
It's asking for controlling area. Let's say I'll give the controlling area. After giving the controlling area, do you find company code anywhere here?
No.
There is no company code. Only thing that we find is controlling area D double zero. Now, according to us, controlling area is defined at what level? Client level. Right? So, by default, your profit center accounting is activated at client level. It's common for all your company codes. After profit center?
Cost centers.
Cost center. So, activation of your cost center accounting is done at what level?
Client level.
This is again at client level. Where do we activate cost center accounting? Where are we going to activate cost to center accounting? Cost center is part of F I or C O?
F I. F I.
Cost center.
F I.
Cost center is part of C O, controlling. Only profit center is part of F I. Cost center accounting is purely part of C O. Now, let me go to controlling area. O K K P. If I open this O K K P. We will find controlling area. Let's open the one that we created for Dell D E zero zero. If I select this. On the left hand side, I have different settings. Activate components and assignment of company codes. Let's go to activate components. If you go to activate components, here under the activate components, first one is cost to center. If I open the dropdown, you have an option here, component active, component not active. Correct? Now, you have to decide whether your cost center accounting is activated or not activated at this level. If you see this setting, this as component not active, you will not be able to use any cost centers in your company code. If you wanted to use cost centers for your company code, you have to come to this screen, activate the relevant functionality here. Cost center for that example. Okay. Now. This cost center is coming from or is activated at controlling area level. Controlling area is part of what level?
Client level.
Client level. So, here we will put client level. Any other settings we did?
Number ranges for C O.
Number ranges. For C O, similarly, number ranges for F I. Number ranges for C O is created at what level?
Client.
For controlling, number ranges are created at client level. Let's check controlling number ranges. Where do we maintain controlling number ranges?
K A N K.
K A N K. If you go here, it's asking for controlling area. Give your controlling area, go to overview. Okay, here we don't find any option called company code, all right? So, let's put controlling number ranges as client level setting. Next one, number ranges for F I. Where do you maintain F? Correct. T code?
F B N one.
F B N one. If you go to F B N one, it is straight away asking you to input company code for which you want a number range. So, by default, F I number ranges are company code level. The moment you find a field called company code, blindly this is at company code level setting. If there is no company code, then you will have to think at what level you are maintaining it. If you are maintaining this at controlling area level, controlling area is a client level setting. So, this setting is also called as client level setting. Because we don't call controlling area level setting, chart of account area level setting. You call it as client, company code and country. Only these three level settings we will define. Okay, this is your company code level setting. What are the other settings? Let's say we also talked about exchange rate. When you maintain. Where do you maintain exchange rate?
O B zero eight.
O B zero eight. If I go to O B zero eight. If I try to add new exchange rate, do we have any option called company code?
No, sir. No, sir.
All right? If I update any exchange rate here, this is valid for all the company codes. Because I am not specifying this exchange rate is belonging only to this company code. So, your exchange rate is again client level. Any other points that we discussed yesterday? We have written nineteen. I think yesterday we have written around how many? Thirty?
G L, sir. G L master.
G L master, let us not write it.
And this profit center hierarchy and profit center master data comes under profit center, right?
Yeah, those are part of your profit center and cost center, hierarchy, groupings and all. That's all? Okay. We will add later on if we come across anything new. Now, if we look at these things again, most of the settings which are coming from your baseline configuration are client level or at company code level. Majority of them.
Client level.
Majority of your baseline configuration is at client level. Now, that is why. Now, that is why whenever you are doing any project, the first configuration that will be done is your baseline configuration. Okay, first configuration in any project as baseline config. This baseline configuration is the first configuration that we do in any project. And who will do this baseline configuration, this first baseline configuration is done by which module consultant?
F I.
F I.
Okay, Fico consultant will do this. Okay, Fico consultant will do this, first baseline configuration. When you are doing first baseline configuration, you need to have a separated T R. What you need to have? Separate T R will be created for baseline config. When we say separated T R is created for baseline config, in your baseline configuration, transport request, whenever you say any setting, you get a prompt.
Yes, sir.
Whenever you do any configuration, you will get a customization request prompt or T R related prompt. First thing that you are going to define is baseline configuration for whatever the client that you are defining for. And you are going to define all these settings until you are able to post a document, in short, all the ledgers, all these things. Once this baseline configuration is completed, you are going to do your business process configuration. Yesterday, we discussed one is your baseline, the other one is
Business process.
Business process. Okay, baseline configuration is Fico module activity and business process is also Fico module activity, let us say for other modules, they will not be doing baseline configuration. Straight away, they will get into business process configuration, because for any module, for any person to configure the system, they need basic things like company code, all these things.
Yes.
Right, if your company code to be functional, you need to define all these settings for your company code. For all the other modules, all what they need is only the company code. But for them to use the company code, your company code must have all the other baseline parameters assigned to it. Otherwise, your company code is incomplete, it will not accept any transaction, it will not allow you to create any masters, it will not generate any reports. First, as a Fico consultant, you will do the baseline configuration and you will submit or you will circulate an email within your project team that baseline configuration for so-and-so client or so-and-so company code has been completed, please find below, you are going to mention what is your company code that you have created, what is the chart of account that is created, what is the controlling area that is created. Certain key points you are going to mention in your email. And you are going to attach K D S document. So that if I am a M M consultant, if I am S D consultant, if I am P P or any other module consultant, let us say I want to know which is chart of account are we using. I do not know how to go to the system chart of account screen or any other setting screen to find out what is created. Now, I am not supposed to ask you every time, I am not supposed to depend on you. What is the code for our company code, what is the code for our fiscal year, whatever it is. So, to avoid all these confusions, we will maintain a document called K D S. Okay, in the K D S document, you are going to have all the parameters, similarly like this. We have company code, we will put company code, next to the company code, you will put, let us say D E one zero. And whoever is looking at this K D S document, they will come to know, okay, we have created D E one zero as company code. You do not have to open the S A P to find out what is created, you do not have to ask the other consultant to find out what is created. You just have to look at the K D S document. Okay. Now, in this few things, like let us say two, three things are created at company code level, but the rest all are created at client level setting. Any setting that you are defining at client level setting will require assignment setting. Correct?
Yes.
Any setting that you are defining for client level, to make it applicable for your company code, you have to assign it to your company code. Only with the assignment, you will be able to use that functionality. Let us say I have created company, I have created company code, you have another setting you called assign company code to company.
Yes.
Right, these two you have to assign. Now, if you create chart of account at client level, do you have another setting, assignment of chart of account to company code?
Yes.
Correct.
If you talk about fiscal year variant, do you have another assignment to the company code for fiscal year variant?
Yes.
Similarly, posting period variant, you are creating a posting period variant, you are also assigning posting period variant to your company code?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, field status variant we are creating, we are again assigning field status variant to our company code. There is a separate setting for assignment. Agree?
Yes.
Yes.
Now, while defining the tolerance group, in the tolerance group screen itself, there is a company code. Wherever you are giving a company code, which means this is setting is going to work only for the company code which you mentioned on the screen while creating. So, any setting that you are defining at company code level while defining, that does not require any assignment. Because that is company code level configuration and which is going to work only for that company code, correct?
Correct.
Next, document splitting. Document splitting is again chart of account level, now, this also has assignment. Document splitting is at chart of account level. Now, you are going to assign chart of account to your company code. Document splitting, classify G L accounts, the first setting, we are going to define at chart of account level, is this correct?
Yes, sir.
If I open classified G L account at a document splitting, it is asking for chart of account, let us say, I will give one chart of account. Now, how system comes to know which company code these settings to apply? Again, it will see this chart of account is used by which company codes. Alright, before coming to document splitting, we must have created chart of account, because without chart of account, you cannot complete document splitting setup. This chart of account is at client level. Now, this chart of account must be assigned to certain company codes.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
From here, system will understand your document splitting settings to be applicable for what are all company codes. Okay. There is no direct assignment, there is indirect assignment for this, indirectly, system will come to know which company codes your settings applicable to. Next one, tax procedure. When we are defining the tax procedure, when we are defining tax procedure, we are defining at country level.
Yes, sir.
Now, we are assigning the tax procedure to the company code.
Yes, sir.
Where are we assigning tax procedure?
O B forty.
Tax procedure.
O B B.
O B B G.
O B B G. In O B B G, are we assigning to the company code?
No.
No, sir.
So, we are assigning to the country, let us say, here you are assigning to the country, what is the country here? India?
India.
Now, system is going to open the company code setting. Company code setting is O X zero two. Now, while creating a company code, you have a setting called country.
Yes, sir.
Alright, tax procedure is assigned to country India. All the company codes which are created with country as India, in this screen, for whatever the company code country is defined as India, your tax procedure is going to be applicable for all those company codes. Okay, tomorrow if somebody is asking you how system understands which tax procedure to be used, because there is no direct assignment. Correct, we are not directly connecting tax procedure to your country, but how system understands in this way, in reverse way. Tax procedure is connected to country, country is connected to company code. Clear? Next one, controlling area. If you are defining a controlling area at client level, in controlling area, you have another setting called assignment. If you go to okay, K P. You have a dedicated option here, setting inside the controlling area, which talks about assignment of company codes. Right, here also you have an option to assign controlling area to the company codes. Next one, ledgers. When you are creating any ledger, let us say let us go through the T code, what is the T code for creating a ledger in Hana system?
F I N S C underscore ledger.
F I N S C underscore ledger, this is mandatory transaction code to be remembered. Okay, F I N S C underscore ledger, any ledger, any currency is controlled at this setting level. F I N S C underscore ledger. Enter. Let us say you are defining a ledger. If you go to new entries, there is no company code, but once you are inside the ledger, there is a setting called company code settings for the ledger. Alright, here you are going to assign your company code to the respective ledger. Let me go back. If I check any ledger, let us say A one. Now, do you have our company code listed in this D E double zero?
No.
No, sir.
It is not that, in case if we want to use this ledger, A one ledger, we have to assign company code. What you will do, you will come here, add a new entry, you will connect your company code here. So, again, there is an assignment setting for ledger to company code. Alright, next one is accounting principle. Now, this accounting principle is defined at client level, but where are you assigning this accounting principle?
Empty code.
If I go to ledger, right, here you have company code and here you have accounting principle. Right, accounting principle is again assigned to your company code, because in each company code, you may be using different, different accounting principle. Next one, document type, do we assign document type to any of the object? Are you, are we going to assign document type to the company code?
No, sir, we will not assign.
So, your document type will have no assignment. So, it is only defined at client level, so that this is applicable for all your company codes, you can use the document type for any company code. Next one, currencies. If you are defining a local currency at the time of a company code creation, you are going to put the currency. If you are defining group currency, at client level, you are going to maintain in S A C for transaction code. For hard currency or index based currency, you are going to define it at country level, what is the T code for hard currency definition?
O Y zero one.
O Y zero one, wherein you are going to define the currency at country level. Next one, profit center. Anything that you are creating, let us say I am creating profit center. Now, profit center, we are talking about client level setting, anything that you are defining at client level must be assigned.
Company code.
Right, if I go to any profit center display, K E fifty three. Now, in this profit center master record, there is a field called company codes. In this company code, you have to do the assignment here. If your controlling area is used by five company codes, you will find five company codes listed here. And you have to tick to the company code where this profit center is valid. Okay, by default, system will enable profit center for all your company codes, you have to come to this screen, put tick for only the respective company code. Here, you are again connecting your profit center with the company code. Similarly, while defining any cost center, do we find company code option?
Yes, we can find here. Come here.
I go here. Do you find any company code option here?
No, sir.
Why we are not able to see, anybody saw company code on this screen before?
Control center. Sir, can you please click on?
Control?
Control is assigned with company code.
Basic data controller here.
Now, the reason why it is not coming here is, what is our controlling area?
D double zero.
Let us go to okay, K P. Ours is what, D E zero zero. I take D double zero, if I go to assignment of company codes, how many company codes are assigned?
One.
One.
If only one company code assigned to your controlling area on the cost center master, company code field will not appear, because by default, this belongs to your one company code which is assigned to controlling area. The moment you put second company code, you will find a field appearing called company code here. Anybody has any controlling area which has more than one company code assignment?
Yes, sir.
In this client, anybody has?
A P one zero, A P two zero. Controlling area.
A P zero zero. If I go here, A P zero zero, how many company codes are assigned, there are two company codes. Now, let me try to display a cost center of this A P zero zero, A P zero zero or A P one zero.
No, sir.
Let me find.
Complete or centering. The controlling area should be.
A P zero zero. Okay, there are some cost centers, let me display this, do you find company code option here?
Yes, sir.
Do you see company code field here?
Yes.
Right, now, earlier why we did not get company code, now how we are getting company code, it is based on number of company codes that are assigned to your controlling area, if your controlling area is assigned to one company code, you will not find company code field while creating the cost center, because by default, system assigns your controlling, your cost center to the single company code that is assigned. The moment you have more than one company code, system cannot understand. More than one company code, system cannot understand for which company code I have to use this. You have to mention for which company code this controlling area is valid. Now, another point here, can we use one cost center for multiple company codes?
Yes, we can use, sir.
No, we can't.
I'll put a point here. One cost center. Multiple. Company codes. Second point. One profit center, multiple, which one is correct, which one is wrong? One is correct, one is wrong.
Cost center we can use.
Cost center can we use for multiple company codes?
No.
No sir.
No. Profit center?
Yes. Yeah, it can be used.
Profit center can be used for multiple company codes. Now, here on the cost center screen, there is no multiple option here. I cannot give a range for company code. I have to strictly put only one company code for which it belongs to. Right, if I put A P one zero, I cannot put A P two zero. But on the other side, if I go to. K E fifty three. Profit center is common, let me open. Common. Here, if I go to company codes, if you see this profit center is assigned to both company codes, A P ten and A P twenty. Corrector?
Yes, sir.
Now, in this profit center, entries can be posted from A P one zero company code, A P two zero company code also. Now, number ranges for controlling. When you are defining the number ranges for controlling, you are going to define the number ranges at company code level or at controlling area level.
Controlling area level.
Controlling area.
When you are defining number ranges for controlling, which means at K A N K screen, let's go to. K A N K. On this screen, it is asking you to input controlling area, not company code. Now, one controlling area is used by multiple company codes. So this number range maintenance of your controlling area is not, is not at company code level, it is at client level. One time you will maintain number ranges for controlling area, all the company codes which are assigned to your controlling area will share the same number ranges. Okay, now document number one may belong to company code one, document number two may belong to company code two, possible or not? Let me put this here. F I document number. I'll put C O document number. Document number one may belong to D E zero zero. Document number two also belongs to D E zero zero. Document number three is also D E zero zero. This is how your F I document numbers are updated for a particular company code. Yes, no? Your numbers are in sequence?
Yes, sir.
But when it comes to controlling, let's say document number one may belong to D E zero zero. Two may be D E zero zero again. Three may be D E zero one. Four may be D E zero two. Is this possible?
Yes, it is possible. One controlling area, we can assign multiple company codes.
This is possible because your controlling area is used by different different company codes. At the time of posting of a transaction, based on the company code that you are triggering, your number range will get assigned. Your number ranges are not company code specific in C O. These are controlling area specific. You may not have continuous numbering in your particular company code. So don't get confused if you see non-sequential numbers in controlling. Okay? Now, next one is your exchange rate. When you are defining exchange rate, you will have to define the exchange rate at client level, which means. Once you are updating I N R two dollar exchange rate as eighty. Now, this eighty is applicable for all your company codes wherever you are doing the transaction with I N R dollar currency pair, corrector? I have no option to restrict. A particular exchange rate for a particular company code, I cannot do it. Let's say, I have two company codes. D E zero one. And then D E zero two. For the same currency pair, I N R two dollar. I N R two dollar, in this company code I want eighty, in this company code I want eighty one. Can we do this? For the same date. Let's say for today's.
We can do, sir.
How?
It is different company code, no?
It is client level setting.
This is a client level.
We can't do, sir. We can't.
We cannot do it. When you go to exchange rate maintenance.
I understood.
Clear, right?
Yes.
So here, we are not updating the company code anywhere. Now, what we are doing here is, we are going to maintain exchange rate type E M. Alright, and then you are giving dates. And then the rate, direct quotation or indirect quotation, in case for the same date, in one company code I want eighty. In the other company codes, I want eighty one. Can we do any other thing here to make it possible?
We can maintain different exchange rate type.
Right, you can, you have to maintain different exchange rate type. Let's say for this, you are maintaining a C M. Here you maintain the other things. Other exchange rate type, maybe you create your own exchange rate type or you can use. Any exchange rate type that is available here. Okay, there are different exchange rate types that are available. Assign eighty under E M, eighty one under another, another exchange rate type. But while posting a transaction, do you have an option to mention that which exchange rate type to be used? Let's say I am posting a document here. Anywhere do we have an option to pick?
Currency and rate.
No, sir. Exchange rate type.
Rate type, here.
Currency and rate.
Here you are going to give the rate. But I don't want user to input manually here. System should automatically take if company code is A P ten eighty one, if company code is A P twenty eighty rupees. So this is again based on your settings. By default, all your exchange rates are updated or converted with what exchange rate type?
E M.
M.
E M. Where are you maintaining? Where are you defining that, please update my exchange rate with E M? Did we define or are we defining this setting anywhere?
O B twenty two.
O B twenty two is not applicable in S four Hana. Where do you maintain currency in S four Hana?
A E.
P N C underscore ledger.
Ledger only, correct. F I N S C underscore ledger. Here you will find currency type, global currency conversion settings. You will have to play with these settings to achieve your requirements. If I go to global, this is currency type. Global currency conversion setting. Okay, you have ten which is your company code currency. Company code currency is real time conversion, what is the exchange rate type?
E M.
E M. Let's say if I wanted to change this. Am I able to edit this? No, right? Am I able to edit this? I am able to add a new entry, but I am not able to edit. The existing record. This is S A P standard. For your company code currency, system always converts from your E M exchange rate type. If you want to convert your foreign currency, like any other currency, third local currency onwards, you can convert it based on your own requirement. Let's say you have currency settings for company codes. Let's go to our company code which we have defined, D E zero zero. Now, for Dell, which currency type we have updated? Group currency. We told group currency dollar is converted from company code currency based on what exchange rate type E M. Here I can change the rate that I want. I don't want E M, I want, let's say, I. If I save it on my exchange rate screen, I have to maintain the exchange rate with I, exchange rate type as I. If I put exchange rate type as E M, system will not detect that rate. It will look for the rate type here, from this rate type, it will pick the value. Okay? Now, let's say for my company code currency, if I can add my local currency. I'll put D E zero zero, what is your local currency type?
Ten.
Ten. If I put ten. It is giving a error message. What error message? This red color. Currency type ten cannot be used in currency conversion for company code D E zero zero. Let's open why we cannot use this. Currency type ten is defined as company code dependent. You have defined currency conversion settings for. Sorry. Our company code is not D zero zero. Okay, let me open this again. Have to come out. No. F I N S C ledger. Currency conversion settings for company code. New entry. D E one zero is our company code, not D one zero. D E zero one also. No. We have not.
D E two zero.
No, D zero zero is also there. Double zero, it's there.
Double zero only, yes.
Double zero only, correct. Now it says. Currency type ten is defined as company code independent. You have defined currency conversion settings for it in company code D E zero zero, this is not allowed.
Sir, it is already ten updated, right?
It is already there but not in this screen. Now, what we are trying to do, we are trying to check if you can change your standard currency conversion setting from E M to any other. Okay, this is setting is for non-local currency, which means apart from company code currency, if you have any other currency like. Group currency, hard currency, index based currency, you can decide at what exchange rate type you want system to convert this. But not for the local currency. For local currency. If you go to global currency conversion settings, there is one setting here, you are on which mode? Change mode? But if I try to select this, I am not able to select this, I am not able to do anything for this. Right? Function code cannot be selected, which means you cannot maintain, we cannot use. Exchange rate type other than E M for local currency conversion. Clear?
Yes.
Your local currency or company code currency is always converted from document currency using exchange rate type E M only. This is S A P standard and cannot be changed.
Quick question on the exchange rate types, why we are having different types of exchange rate types like daily, spot, E M etcetera?
Let's say if you are using different different company codes. And you may want to use a different exchange rate for a particular company code or for a particular currency pair. Now, if your requirement is to evaluate one currency pair in different rates. Assuming I N R two dollar. I want to use I N R two dollar at eighty rupees in one company code, but I want to evaluate it at eighty two rupees in the other company code. So to meet such certain kind of requirements, to update different exchange rate for the same pair in different company codes for various reasons. You are going to update the same currency pair using different exchange rate type. Because at one exchange rate type, only one rate can be updated. But wherever you have a requirement to have different rates for the same pair on the same date. You must use another exchange rate type. While posting, we will see how we are going to play with this exchange rates. Right, when you do document type setting. Where do you define document type?
O B.
T code for. O B A seven. If you go to O B A seven. If I try to create a new document type. In this document type, you have something called exchange rate type.
Yes, sir.
Exchange rate type for foreign currency document, F C document. If you put an exchange rate here, what will happen? Normally, we told that system takes E M exchange rate type. Now, when we are posting, we are going to practically experiment all these points. So we will first post a normal transaction, we will see at what rate system had converted the number. Later on, we will pick another exchange rate type other than E M, for the same date, we will put another rate. And that exchange rate type, whatever we are using other one, we will assign it here.
But my question is, why bank is allowing, giving three, one or more rates for Indian to U S D? When I go to the bank, it should be only one amount rate, why they are offering two or three options?
There may be different conditions.
Only because bank is offering one or more options, S A P is providing that, but my question is, why bank is providing that?
That I am not sure, why bank? But do we get? But it, it, it depends, right? Your global exchange rate is different, but when we try to exchange it from a bank or any exchange rate mediators, you, your exchange rate deviates. When you say bank is giving three rates, you mean one bank, same bank is giving three different rates or different banks are giving different rates?
If, that is the point, normally we are going to buy all the exchange rates from only one bank always. So for Indian to U S D, for that bank, there will be only one rate.
Correct. But if you go to the other bank, the rate may differ. Is that what you point?
No, that is a different situation.
Maybe it's talking about bank, bank rate, bank selling rate.
No, it's not that, bank buying and bank selling, he is specifically talking about I N R two dollar. Because buying and selling comes with your currency pair. I N R two dollar, dollar to I N R. Let me put here. So your question is. Why banks are giving. Different exchange rates for. Same currency pair, is this what, your question?
I would say why bank, not banks, that has a different meaning. I am asking one single bank always, when, let's say if I am a company code Dell, I am going to deal with the A S B I and I am going to get the. I am going to deal with the ASBI and I am going to get the currency rates for all the countries that I am dealing with.
Right.
So if it is INR to USD, I expect that INR to USD whatever, one single amount. Why they are giving three or four different types of values for it? And who determines that I am supposed to use EM or supposed to use the D or spot rate? So there are multiple questions that will branch out from the original question that we are having here.
Correct. Normally for all your exchange rates, for all your day-to-day postings, you will be having EM rate. Okay, let's say for your different accounting principle. Right, we may consider if you are using different accounting principle. Let's say you are using IFRS, you are using Indian Companies Act, or you are using any other accounting principle. According to the other accounting principle, we may have to use the different exchange rate or for your monthly currency valuation. And you have your monthly currency translation. Okay, we will have to consider these factors to decide which rate to be used. At the end of the every month, all the currencies that we are operating in India must be equal into two dollar. At the end of the month, whatever the exchange rate that we are defining in the system as month-end exchange rate, based on that, system calculates your foreign currency and it will determine according to this, this is what your exchange rate. While defining it so you can again decide based on what exchange rate type you want to reevaluate your currencies. Okay, so this I will tell you clearly in the next session. Okay, why exactly we use it?
Thank you, Ajay. If you allow me, I have more questions related to, one question related to cost center. You have put cost center is client-specific, but just now we saw that when we are dealing with the cost center, it will be associated with a particular company code.
Correct.
So why we say that it is a client, if there is any specific reason behind that?
Wherever we talk about client and it has an assignment connected to it.
But can I, can I read this in a different way? Cost center will be created at the company, for a particular company code level? Or do I need to read that as cost center will be assigned to a company code?
Cost center will be assigned to a company code because you will not get all the company codes that are there in your list. Let's say if we go to KS zero one or KS zero three. Slash N. If we come here and system will not understand which company code to be used because you are defining any cost center at controlling area level. Correct?
Yeah.
Now, your controlling area is used for several company codes. Is that right?
True.
Now, which company code of controlling area you want to connect this cost center to? So accordingly, you have to input company code here. Now, this company code is assigned from the controlling area, company code list.
Got it. And once you, once you assign a company code here, AP ten or whatever number there it is, down below we are having the currency. Whether it is picking that company code currency or do I have the choice to choose a different currency there?
We can change the currency here. While creating, you can change this, but you, we have the option to change this cost center currency. This is called as your object currency, cost-object currency.
And now in FI, let's say that in AP ten, the local currency is INR. Here you are declaring that as USD in the KS zero one, you are declaring that USD. What will happen when a transaction is posted on the finance side, how it is going to come here?
Let's say you are doing a finance document posting. Okay, now here you are going to talk about local currency. We are going to talk about group currency or in short, document currency, local group currency. Now, when the same document is going to update in the controlling, you have object currency. You have, what are the other currencies? Any idea? Transaction currency.
Group currency.
And controlling area currency. So these currencies will get updated. So if you posted a transaction in INR, you will find the INR figures in the transaction currency. From the cost center report layout, you can switch which currency to be displayed. If you maintain your cost center in euros, your cost center data will show euro value if your controlling area is dollar. So these three currencies will get updated from the CO side.
If that is the case, then why explicitly I want to select a currency in the cost center?
Let's say you are spending amount in any currency. Now I am giving, let's say salaries to the expats. But for certain expats, I may be paying my salary in foreign currency, though I am working in India. If I am taking freelance services or if I am taking any outsourced, outsourced services, I may be spending some expenses. I may be paying them in the other currency, let's say dollar or any other currency. I want to track my expenses in this particular currency, in this particular cost center, only in the foreign currency, let's say dollar or any other currency. The moment I open this cost center, values that I get is from the object currency. It's only to have the flexible reporting purpose, that's it.
Good, thank you.
Otherwise, the system by default, it will give you two currencies. But you are spending in euros, you want to track euro value also in your reporting. Clear?
Clear. One final question, this is related to the accounting principles. And I don't know whether I can frame my question, see in SAP whenever we are declaring an account, what is it? What is the top, I forgot, accounting principles.
Accounting principle.
Yeah, whenever we say accounting principle, it is simply a declaration we are doing, we are not connected to any of the accounting books, whatever we are doing. That is first point. And the second point is, you said that accounting principle is at the company code level?
Is defined at client level, assigned to the company code.
Would it not be connected to a country level? Because let's say that if I am having DE zero zero and DE zero one, both of them are in India. How I am going to, whatever the accounting principle I am going to follow, would it not be at the country level rather than at the company code level?
Let's say. So before that, let's talk about leading and non-leading ledger. Now, let's say leading ledger I am using for IFRS. Now, this is common for all your company codes?
Yes sir.
Agree? Now, non-leading ledger, we are going to use it for local reporting. When we are talking about local reporting, it changes the moment country gets changed in a particular company code? Correct?
Yes sir. Depends upon country.
Now, let me go to ledger screen. F I N S C underscore ledger. Now, if you see this, at the right, there is an accounting principle. At the right, there is an accounting principle. Now, if you assign accounting principle at ledger level, this accounting principle is applicable for all your company codes. Any accounting principle assigned at the ledger level is applicable for all your company codes. In case if you wanted to add, assign additional accounting principle for a particular company code, you have to come to under ledger, company code. At each company code, let's say you have to assign another accounting principle. This is ledger accounting principle and here you have accounting principle for company code. You can assign different accounting principles under your company code and ledger combination. While we are defining this in the system, I will explain you with detailed examples.
Sure, Ajay. Thank you.
Okay. So you have two level of account principle assignment, one is at ledger level, the other one is at company code level. But this setting we can use only for the leading ledger because leading ledger you are going to use, IFRS commonly for all your company codes. But when it comes to non-leading ledger, it is one ledger used by multiple company codes operating in different countries. So IFRS, I can define it ledger level, but for non-leading ledger, I have to define this at company code level, considering the fact that these are belonging to different, different countries.
Go on.
Okay. Yeah.
And we can say country also, no? Non-leading nature?
Yes. But the assignment is not at country level, assignment is at company code level.
Okay.
Okay. Alright then. Let me stop this recording.